All those meeting together, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, please be seated.
Catch your breath.
Yeah, I gotta catch my breath here. Okay. So are we starting, Christine, with the?
Um, it's fine, we can just go in the order.
Go in the order, okay. Right. So we will, please let the record reflect that all board members are present. Right now, okay. All right, good deal. Uh, all board members are present, is, are there any visitor comments this evening?
No sign.
Sorry?
We had no signs.
Okay. Then on to the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes, there's the May 3rd executive session, and then the May 9th executive session. May 15th was our regular board meeting, and May 24th was a special board meeting. So do we have a, oh, and the financial, we have the treasurer's report for May of 2023. And Mr. Dernold, the claims, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gross wages for May 12th, 2023 is seven hundred and, seven, seven hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and sixty-four cents. Gross wages for May 26th, 2023, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and six cents for grand total of one million, four hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents for claims prepay from May 1 through May 31st, 2023. Nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents for claim vouchers from June 19th, 2023. Four hundred and eleven thousand, ninety-eight dollars and five cents for claims Forest Hills on 6/20 of 2023 for eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighteen cents for grand total of one million, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-one cents. And a grand total for both areas there, two million, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you, Mr. Dernold. We also have personnel, resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations, D1 through 33, and personnel appointments and transfers, E1 through 69.
Dana, um, C, donations, C.
Oh, I was fixing to do this, okay. So in addition to personnel, we have donations, and there was two hundred and forty-one dollars and six cents for Mrs. Struax's room that came from Donors Choose. For all new teachers, they should, should check into Donors Choose. They can get a lot of support from community by that. And then there are out of state and overnight field trips. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, the volleyball team is asking permission to attend their camp, which will be in Monsey, Indiana. And the dates, I'll have for you just a second. It's on the ballot, remember? Uh, Ju- July 26th and 27th, sorry about that.
Okay. That being the consent agenda, is there a motion?
I move approval, consent agenda.
Movement, second, movement seconded. Any discussion?
Quick question, Dr. Sanders. Number 33 through 35 on the appointments. On the, there's three transfers, back to back to the EIS, are, were those all teachers from EPS? What schools did they come from?
Uh, no, they're within EIS. Uh, well, Lucas Roman is from, I believe, EIS. Stephanie Powell's moving from Title I to a regular third grade classroom. Kevin Gill is moving from the junior high to the fourth grade position at EIS. And Stephanie Noth is, will be our high ability teacher at EIS. Do you have anything else you want to add to those, Jennifer?
These are all, we have to put them through like this because, so that they're coded appropriately on the position control sheet. So even though three out of the four are currently EIS teachers, they're not coded the way that they will be pretty upcoming here.
Okay, Mr. Gill, was he a math teacher?
He was a math teacher in the sixth grade for 24 years, decided to take on an elementary classroom for the first time.
Okay, all right, gotcha. And I know, there sounded like some trading going on there, okay. And I know where he got some of his materials for elementary. It's not coming to my house now. Okay, I got you. All right, thank you.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there any particular ones you would like to mention or talk to? Okay, we move it on. Have the assistant superintendent's report, so Mr. Irwin.
Yes, you guys should have cash flows there in front of you. Education fund, things look really similar to what you saw last month. Not a whole lot changed there. Everything came in pretty accurate. You'll see some Forest Hills receipts as we continue to do the cleanup of just year end invoicing and things like that. You'll see some later things in the board agenda items for it as well. And then we also did our transfer to Rainy Day that was approved last month. Once the July DPI 54 form comes out, I'll update the new fiscal year tuition support even closer, but that estimate will be pretty close is what's in there right now. All in all, the education fund does not look a whole lot different than what you saw last month, which is a good thing. So we're moving right along. The debt service fund, no revenue in the debt service fund in the month of May. Again, that's normal. We did pay a small trustee fee. Looking forward into June here this month, we do pay a couple of GO bond payments as we continue to switch the newer bonding to that June-December payment schedule. You'll see a swing in our year-end cash, our cash balance month and cash balance number just because that's when we see our first disbursement from taxes come in in the month of June. So that's where you see that balance just have that shift from coming in there. Operations fund, again, it looks better than what it did last month, a little bit better. Claims came in a little lower than projections, which is a great thing. And we're just tackling the summer upkeep list, so we're moving right along. I'll take any questions on those real quick. I did want to make a note, next month you'll see the budget calendar come out for the 2024 budget. Crazy to think that we're already there, but you'll see that budget calendar come out next month.
Okay, thank you. Now we will open the public hearing officially on the amendment to the superintendent's contract. If there are any of those in the public who would like to address this issue or, not issue, but item, so. Hearing seen none. Christine, would you mind giving a brief overview of the change for the amendment?
Sure. The, this is actually the Fourth Amendment to the superintendent's contract. It's going to extend the contract one year, beginning 2024, so there'll be two years left on the current contract. And it's going to increase the salary from one hundred and, one hundred and forty thousand to one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred, aligning with the increase that the teachers received, and also a one-time stipend of one thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Hearing no one to objections, we will close the public hearing on the superintendent's contract. Next, we have permission to advertise HVAC projects 133 with Creative Engineering Solutions. Mr. Irwin?
Yes, we have Gabe Kerr here tonight from Creative Engineering Solutions that he can help answer some questions. But this is that permission to advertise for the three separate projects. The one project is in the auxiliary building there on 46. One is a project here at the high school for chiller replacements at the high school. And then one project is at the intermediate primary school for a chiller replacement as well. So this is those same projects that we did the signed contract with Creative Engineering Solution a few months back on. And it's just, we've worked through the drawings on that, met with them several times. We're ready to release those drawings and put them out for advertisement to start receiving bids so that we can get going on that work. So with that, I'll have Gabe here to answer any questions that you guys might have about those three bid packages. But I did put the spec sheets in the back in the board agenda again, so that you guys could see that again, just to go back over what all they're doing as far as the work goes. Didn't think that you wanted to look through the hundreds of pages on the actual drawings again, just looking at mechanical lines and all that stuff. But he is here to talk about that a little bit, if you want to walk through or ask any questions.
Just the one question I have. If, am I understanding correctly that the, the actual work will begin on the week of August 21st? Is that about right? If, if all goes according to plan? Is that calendar, am I reading the calendar right, I guess is what I'm asking.
They'll take, yeah, go ahead.
You're fine.
I think you still have that in front of me, I could have brought that, that date. It sounds right, it's toward the end of, toward the end of August, after contract is approved.
Okay.
Given them an notice to proceed, that sounds about correct.
Okay, and then it'd be finished mid-December, is the?
I think that's based on some of the work, some of the work will depend on timelines where it comes in, right? So some of those chillers have pretty long lead times right now. I want to say some of them were eight to 12 weeks out on the chillers, some, some more.
A little more even, yes, for the chillers particularly that you mentioned, yeah.
Of course, in December we won't need a lot of work from those, so.
So on some of the stuff that they had talked about, I think when we had, we had met before, we talked about doing some of the HVAC as far as the cooling work during the heating season and some of the cool, you know, some of the heating work in the cooling season to try to alleviate some of those concerns.
Sure.
So we'll have to finite and kind of pin down those schedules a little bit more as we go through it. And some of those items have longer lead times than others. So I, I don't expect to see a ton of work going on in August. I think it'll just be dependent on getting some of those things ordered. So as soon as the board gives approvals on those bid packages, I think those companies will get started with those orders, and it'll just be a matter of kind of pinning down when the right timing is to get that stuff going, so we don't cause issues within our own buildings.
That's, yeah, that was, I guess, what I was most concerned about, thank you.
We talked about some of the work that at the facility on 46 would take place next spring.
Yeah, that's what they were looking at, is again, just kind of keying in and saying, hey, if we had access to the building during this time, we might be able to knock out a huge chunk of this work in, you know, a month, two months, and what that looks like. And so they'll kind of look at strategically when the best timing is to implement that, and when the actual equipment will come in. And so I think that'll be something that we'll continue to work with Creative Engineering Solutions on, and the contractors who win the bids, to figure out when the best timing is to get that work accomplished.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it, so far working with Creative Engineering Solutions. They've met with us several times, talked to Matt, I don't know how many times on the phone, and they know what they're doing, so I have a lot of confidence that we'll have a, a good project here.
Okay.
Definitely did a very thorough.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Or a motion?
I'm going to move for advertising of the HVAC projects 1, 2, and 3.
A second.
Wait a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now we have a, a series of project lease hearings, and there's resolutions related to those. So first off, I will officially open the hearing on Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. And I will turn it over to Jacob to walk us through this project.
Yes. So Jacob McClellan with Bose McKinney &amp; Evans. These will be very similar to the 1028 resolutions we did at the last board meeting. We don't have to go through the, the tax impact here. But what you're going through is the project and whether the rental that will be paid in connection with each project is reasonable. And it's part of just statutorily having an opportunity for the public to comment. I know we've had a bunch of public hearings already, so. But just high level, this is for the public, for six separate projects, not to exceed $40 million. The resolution itself related to the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project, it authorizes the lease in connection with the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. And it, the lease amendment includes lots of not-to-exceed amounts. What, I guess to take a step back, this will be issued through your building corporation. So this amendment to the lease, you guys have a lease in place that supports some bonds. This adds on an additional amount of rentals to support the 2023 bonds. The not-to-exceed in the amendment to lease is just that, what will happen is, assuming everything gets approved tonight, we'll be back in July for approval of bond document forms. And then that would be the last authorization process. And then Dr. Sanders will work with Stiefel to determine kind of when you guys need funds and when the best time is to price. Stiefel will provide us with final numbers. Those will get input into an addendum to this lease. And those payments then will ultimately line up with the bond payments. We'll also fill in your bond documents at that time and send a stack tabbed up for you all to sign. But, so, because we have six separate projects, there's six separate hearings, just like with the 1028, and it's really just to take comment on each of the projects. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Dana, unless there's any questions.
And Dr. Sanders, you will discuss the need for the project?
Yes, so in regard to the Early Childhood Center project, and really all the projects that we're going to be talking about tonight, they all come from a facility study that we had done by Lancer Architect Firm a little over a year ago. And they were very thorough, coming down, talking with maintenance, just all the key people in the corporation about our needs, and we were able to develop this facility study. And one of the biggest items is the, basically building a early childhood center. Now, we, this will be phase three of our plan. If you remember, phase one was to move the preschool out of the facility on 46 into EPS. Phase two was to build the current, uh, early, Edgewood Early Childhood Center. For, and we really wanted to move step by step so we could be able to demonstrate to our taxpayers a need to go further. And over the last two years, the preschool has a waiting list of over a hundred, so we could actually double the size of the preschool and should in order to meet the needs of all of our preschool students in the, in the community. And then also, this project will enable us to address another need. And that is, we need some more space in EPS, it's full. And so as we build the new preschool, that'll free up some classroom space for the primary school.
Moving very well. Opportunity for the public to give comment if they wish to do so. Seeing none, then I will officially close the hearing on the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project. And I will officially open the hearing on the Student Activity Center project. And back to Jacob McClellan.
We do have the resolution.
Well, we do need to do the lease on that first.
Oh, okay.
So each.
I'll just follow this.
That's okay, so we could have done them all at once, but we chose to do, consider each lease after each hearing.
Okay. So, that means, no. Our next item on the agenda is to consider the lease resolution for the Edgewood Early Childhood Center project.
And I move that we adopt the resolution to execute the Third Amendment on the Early Childhood Center project.
One second.
Wait a second, any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so. Hold the thing here, I will officially open again the hearing on the Student Activity Center project. Mr. McClellan?
So again, it's the same, same purpose here. Each project has to be kind of considered separately. It's all going to be in one lease amendment. And really what you're ultimately approving in the resolution is the amendment to the lease and that the lease, that the rental related to the project is fair and reasonable. The rental will be set, you know, based on the amount allocated to the project, so. And consistent with what Stiefel kind of presented, trying to keep the tax rate level and wrap with your current debt. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Explain the purpose of the, or the need for the project, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so we have a, we have a auxiliary gym at the high school that just isn't big enough. And so we will be recommending this project to be able to provide a student activity center that will allow space for spectators, which we don't have now. It'll allow additional space for the athletes, so as they're playing in the different athletic events, they'll be, they won't be so close to the walls. And so this will enable us to have a couple of basketball courts that, that we could use. We'll have one full court, but you could have a couple, two different games going on. And we're looking at some other possibilities as we get closer to the actual design of the project. I'm hoping we'll be able to, to add some equipment that would come down from the ceiling in terms of a volleyball net and maybe a tennis net. We'll, we'll have to see, we haven't discussed all that out yet. That's the biggest need, and it'll not only help the high school, but it will help the community as well.
Any of the public here to speak on this project? Hearing none, I will officially.
Resolution?
Yeah, after we close here.
Okay.
I'll officially close the hearing on the Student Activity Center project. And so then we will now consider the lease resolution for the Student Activity Center project.
I'll move that we adopt the resolution to execute the Third Amendment to the originally Blossom Community School Corporation for the Student Activity Center project.
One second.
Any questions or comments?
Quick question, Dr. Sanders, on, on the, so to get this, the six projects listed in chronological order, somewhere between number three and number four, between the kitchen project and the intermediate school project, are we going to allow some consideration for the parking lot at the old practice football field? I don't see it mentioned anywhere, I just want to make sure, that is a possibility though, right?
Yes, that's part of the Student Activity Center project.
That was factored into that budget there, okay. As, as we're going down the list, we may not get to item six, correct, financially? We may exhaust our funds before we get to item six, is correct?
Are you talking about the, what project are you thinking?
The lighting security project, we may not make it all the way to that.
We, we may not, we may be able to do a part of that.
Okay.
Uh, well, well, it's a very important, every one of these items is very important. So at some point, we, you know, if there are funds that we feel like we're short on, then, then maybe we'll be able to cut back a little bit in certain areas.
Okay, I just didn't, I was nervous because the parking lot, I never saw it on the original whenever any of our company was coming in.
It was built into the spreadsheet, it's been put together for the cost estimates as far as where they came up with their total numbers. So they had numbers attributed to parking there, along with these projects, yeah.
As part, as part of that project, okay.
Yeah, that was attributed as like a little side item that you saw in that updated budget that talked about that parking lot area out there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we, we had a preliminary meeting with Lancer last week. In the event that you approve their agreement tonight, we started talking about them coming back down and talking, having more specific conversations with the key stakeholders. And the discussion of the parking lot was part of that conversation.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Move further? We do have a motion that was seconded, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Right. Now I will officially open the hearing on the Edgewood High School Kitchen Project. Jacob?
This is to take public comment on the lease amendment with respect to that specific project. And ultimately, in the resolution, you guys authorized the execution of the lease amendment as, in connection with that specific project. And really, the, the finding is that the rental is fair and reasonable. And again, the rental will be set based on what you allocate to that project, so. With that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Okay. Dr. Sanders, the need for the kitchen?
Yes, I distinctly remember when we went around as a board and we're, we were trying to give our input on the facility study, and we walked into the kitchen at the high school. And I think it was a consensus of, this is way too small, and definitely need of renovation. So that's going to be, you know, I'll probably say this about every, every project, but that's going to meet a big need for us to address that kitchen. And then also the expansion of the cafeteria. Right now, this, a lot of the students eat in the commons area, and so we want to expand the cafeteria so that more students will be able to eat inside a traditional caf, well, it won't be a traditional cafeteria. We're looking for some seating, possibly, that will be the kind of seating that young people like to have these days. Not your traditional cafeteria table.
Okay. Now, open the hearing for the public to comment on this particular project if they choose to do so. Seeing no one, then I will officially close the hearing on the Edgewood High School Kitchen Project. And I, we will now consider the lease resolution for the Edgewood High School Kitchen Project.
I move to approve the lease resolution for the Edgewood High School Kitchen Project.
One second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Because I think that's the oldest remaining part, property that we have, or part of our property that has had the least work done on it in the last 60 years, so I'm sure it needs it.
Yeah, our tour was in single file.
Yes. Fifty-eight years, Mr. Kerr. That cafeteria has been there 58 years, the kitchen, so it's, it's time, it is time, yeah, sure.
Pretty much knew it, well, it was really nice at one time.
I bet it was, I bet it was.
State of the art. Fifty-eight years ago.
Would we find a JD in graffiti anyplace in there?
Some, some guys did though.
Anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to the Edgewood Intermediate School project. And so I will officially open the public hearing on the Edgewood Intermediate School project. And Dr. Jacob?
So again, this is the public hearing to take comment on the lease amendment with respect to the Edgewood Intermediate School project. And it's to take public comment and be transparent about the, the amendment to the lease as allocated to the intermediate school project. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. President.
Thank you. The need for this project, Dr. Sanders?
Yes, so what I'm going to say for the need is the exact same thing for the next project, the primary school, which will address carpeting issues, new cabinets, and just those types of general renovations at, at EIS and EPS.
Okay. Officially open the public comment portion of this hearing. Anyone wish to speak? Seeing no takers, then I will officially close the hearing on the Edgewood Intermediate School project. And now we will consider the lease resolution for the Edgewood Intermediate School project.
Remove that we adopt the resolution to, the.
I move that we adopt the resolution to, uh, the lease agreement for the Intermediate School Project.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
It's hard to believe that both of them are over twenty years old now, but things happen.
It's due.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, I will officially open the hearing on the Edgewood Primary School Project. Mr. McClellan?
Two more.
Yes.
Again, this is to take comment on the amendment to the lease, which would be the portion of that lease allocated to the primary school project. So with that, Mr. President.
And from the last one, Dr. Sanders says ditto from last time. So officially open for public comment. Hearing none, I will officially close the hearing on the Edgewood Primary School Project. And now we'll consider the lease resolution for the Edgewood Primary School Project.
Mr. President, I move adoption of the resolution to the, uh, Third Amendment of the lease for the Edgewood Primary School Project.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Now, I will officially open our last hearing on the School Renovations Lighting and Security Project.
So again, this is to take public comment on the Third Amendment to the lease, but just as it relates to the renovations, lighting, and security project.
Dr. Sanders?
Mr. President, could I make one note for the record? I'm not sure if this has been mentioned, but I want to make sure that it is for the record that, uh, the notice of all of these hearings was published as legally required.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, yes.
You know, I, I would like to maybe amend what I answered to Brad, uh, earlier when he was asking if we had, um, if we came up short with funds, would we kind of take away from this project? You know, we, we budget for all these projects. So, uh, I don't, unless there's a major issue, I anticipate that we will have funds for all these projects. Because as I was, uh, looking over my comments for needs, these are all very important. We do need, uh, new lighting and the sound system at, at the, uh, sports complexes. Uh, we need new sound system, uh, at the football field and gymnasium. Now, maybe there are more economical ways to address those issues, and we'll look at that. But they're very important needs, and, uh, one of the items I mentioned before is security. Uh, we'll, we're going to be diving into, um, some, uh, possibly some, uh, equipment, some additions, uh, to the school campus that will help in preventing, uh, uh, issues from happening and keeping our students and staff more safe.
Yes, and when it comes to security, we do not publicly state what those security parameters may be, due to confidentiality nature of that, to keep it secure. And, and yes, they are six distinct projects, they will each have a budget. How much is in each budget depends on more, once we get more costing done to, to figure it out. So I will open this part of the hearing for any comments from the public. Okay, seeing none, I will officially close the hearing on the School Renovations Lighting and Security Project, and we will now consider the lease for that project.
Mr. President, I, uh, move adoption of the resolution for the, um, security and lighting and other items on, for the lease.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any questions, comment? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, well, thank you all for sitting through that, it is a very important process that we do. But it does have to be done timely, thank you, Christine, for reminding us that, uh, all public hearings were duly noticed as required by law.
If I could add, for these, uh, hearings, they're, they're very structured. Uh, and it may not, it may seem like there's not a lot of discussion, but there is quite a bit of discussion. The, the school board has had, uh, several meetings over the last year, looking, uh, through the facility study, uh, and determining our needs. We actually have more needs than we do have money, so we have, we have to prioritize. And, uh, we've met with our financial advisor, Stiefel, on the funding of it. Jacob helps us, uh, to make sure we're doing things the right way. So there's a lot of work that goes on outside of these public hearings.
To, to thank, uh, Mr. McClellan, thank Christine Bartlett, Berksen, Law, thank Stiefel, uh, Lancer, BB, the Skilman Corporation. There's been so many people involved in trying to make this happen. Yes, it's, it seems to be going quickly through the process this evening, but there's been a lot of work, as you say, that led up to this, so I think that's a very important point to make. All right, um, now we have consideration of a resolution regarding the 2010 bond property matters. And again, Jacob McClellan.
So, um, you guys have, uh, another series of bonds that are outstanding, they're, they're, they're your 2010 bonds. There's a separate lease on those, and that was for projects at the junior high school and the high school. The junior high school is in the lease premises, um, under that lease. A few years ago, um, with, uh, working through a bond deal, Christine started kind of cleaning up all of your property and transferring things back. Often what you'll have is there was a project here, and you have, you know, the nineteen sixty-four, I think we found, you know, Richland Bean Blossom School Building Corporation. And just kind of for, for, uh, best process, Christine started transferring those back to the school because that's where they belong. But then, at that time, we also talked about flexibility for future financing. And, um, here, you know, for example, with these new projects, you guys will spend some of the, uh, proceeds off-site. Now, there's value in that lease that justifies that. But for flexibility, your 2010 bonds pay off January fifteenth of, of twenty-four. And so this resolution will set it up so that, um, that property, the, the junior high building and the real estate would transfer from that 2010 building corporation, which is a different building corporation, to the lease premises and the trust indenture that we're issuing your 2023 bonds under. That'll provide flexibility for spending proceeds at the junior high. It'll also help justify expenditure of bond proceeds outside of the lease premises. And then the other thing I will mention is, you know, it, it'll be one more thing we don't end up having to clean up, or somebody fifteen or twenty years from now doesn't end up having to clean up. And it will also save in that there's a process. Whenever property goes back to the school and then goes back to a building corporation, we've got to go through an appraisal process. Christine's working through that right now on the site for the, uh, Early Childhood Center project. So there's a little bit of a savings there, but that's what this resolution would do, is it would, uh, once those bonds are paid off, uh, and we'll have a form of the documents for your next meeting, assuming you guys approve this tonight, we would work through, uh, with Christine to get the property transferred from, you know, released from that prior, uh, indenture and lease because they've paid off and transferred over to this new indenture and lease. And then I think ultimately, as you move forward, we would try to put everything under one lease just to make it just a lot more efficient. I'm sure there was a reason at the time in 2010 to have it separate, but it just seemed to us that working toward having everything under a single lease is probably easiest. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I'm just very thankful for Christine, uh, going through and cleaning, cleaning up the records.
Yeah, no, it was, Christine, I don't know how, if you want to say, like, was it nineteen sixty-four was one of the older ones, or?
That sounds right, yeah. It's pretty amazing, those things hang around.
You can kind of see the evolution of where projects were when you're going through that, so.
Well, that's how it happens, every new project, you do something new, you just keep moving forward.
Yeah.
And sometimes it, you forget to circle back and close some things out.
The good thing is then, too, is you're not trying to kind of find out what happened. I mean, we had a, we have a, uh, we kind of created some forms to, you know, this is a building corporation, we're going to reappoint members, but, you know, as you might guess, the, some of those older building corporations, the bylaws and articles, good luck finding them, right, so. Yeah, absolutely, yep.
Okay, uh, is there a motion on the resolution regarding 2010 bond property matters?
I move approval.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At this time, uh, I would like to ask if we could pause and get a couple signatures. Uh, that we had the building corporation who met earlier, and, uh, they, uh, signed the, uh, lease agreement between the building corporation and the school corporation. And, uh, our notary here tonight, uh, in order to, uh, enable her to, to leave, if we could pause and get those signatures, and, uh, I know she wants to stay for my superintendent's report, but, um...
That's what she told me.
Okay, uh, I will call a recess then in our meeting, and we will pause, uh, for some signatures, and we'll reconvene here shortly.
Just Dana and Larry need to sign this, and, uh, Christine is bringing that to you. Thank you for doing this.
Can't imagine she must have missed anything.
Jacob, anything else?
Spine tingling excitement.
And you want copies of those? This one, too?
Yeah.
How will we?
No, thank you very much. Yeah.
Jerry?
Yeah.
Is this yours?
What?
Is this yours?
Nope. Oh, it might be from the building corporation.
Okay.
That might be Jerry Cravens.
All right.
I think it's Jerry's.
You have to give him a text.
Yeah, it's Jerry.
He was sitting in Dana's spot.
Just wanted to make sure it got to us.
Yeah. That's what they're doing.
Text his wife? Everybody knows his wife's name, huh?
We need to explain that to you.
I assume you might realize that.
Copy and scan these. Uh, I can do it. I'll, because I'm gonna do this one. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jacob, appreciate everything.
Yeah.
I don't have it, I'll find it here.
Want to go ahead and reconvene? I will now officially reconvene the June, uh, twenty twenty-three Regular School Board Meeting for RBB Schools. And moving on down, our next item is to revise policy eighty-five-ten. And this is the second reading, so this will be the action, uh, on this item.
Yeah, so Vicky Coffey came to, our Director of Nutrition Services, came to our meeting last month and went through the, the changes, the revisions. So this is the second time that, uh, the boards had a chance to look them over. Uh, I recommend approval to the revisions for policy eighty-five-ten.
I move approval of policy eighty-five-ten.
A second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our next item is consideration to dispose of some surplus technology equipment. And we have our technical director, Rick Routen, here for that item this evening.
Evening, uh, so in front of you is the list of, uh, items that we want to declare surplus to electronically dispose of. Be glad to answer any questions regarding the items that were in the memo.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to, uh, surplus our disposable technology.
Second.
Moved, moved and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed?
There's no residual value to this stuff, right?
No.
Does it cost us to get rid of it?
No.
Then I like that better.
They come and pick it up in a big truck.
All right, all right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Um, now is consideration to approve corporation and student handbooks. Dr. Sanders?
Uh, so, uh, we, uh, have our assistant principals at each school are mainly given the task of, uh, working on, uh, and updating every year the student handbooks. Uh, and then, uh, any changes that are made in the individual school handbooks are also, uh, uh, made in the corporation handbook. All those handbooks are, uh, published, uh, on our website, and Christine Bartlett goes through the handbooks. I know she just loves to get all those handbooks every year, but, because she goes through them, uh, with due diligence and looks for changes in code and, and things like that, and makes some very good suggestions. I gave the board, uh, tonight, I sent you an email, uh, so that you'll have live links, uh, to, if you want to look at the whole handbook, not just the changes. Uh, and then at your desk, um, the changes to the corporation handbook, I did not get in the board packet. Uh, so they, those should be at your desk somewhere, uh, showing what, what changes, uh, we made to the corporation handbook. So I recommend your approval.
I move approval of the changes to the handbooks, corporation handbooks and the, uh, individual school handbooks.
A second.
Any further discussion?
I just appreciate all the work that Christine and the administrators did, and I know that, uh, there was a lot of interest in some of the issues at different buildings, but, uh, I think they've, they've dealt with them well, so.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Um, now, consideration to approve increasing the number of teacher workdays to one hundred and eighty-five. Dr. Sanders?
So, uh, the teachers, uh, here at RBB have always been required, maybe not always, but for the long, long time, uh, been required to, uh, work a hundred and eighty-three days. Uh, as we know about teachers, uh, teachers put in a lot more time, uh, than really they're contracted to. It's just the nature of the business. I was a teacher, I did the same thing. But we would like to add two days to the required number of days. One of the days will be added at the beginning of the school year. Right now, teachers just work, uh, officially one day before the start of the school year. But that one day is often full of meetings, uh, train, required trainings, and, uh, teachers are very anxious to get their classroom ready for their students. And so we're going to add a day at the beginning of the year, um, and, and that day will be just for the teachers. Uh, the principals will not be planning anything on that additional day. Uh, now, if a group of teachers want to work in their, uh... This past year, we did four early release days to give teachers a chance to work in their professional learning communities, professional development. And those, those days were so hectic for students, parents and school staff that we wanted to come up with another plan. So this year, we applied for two, just two full days instead of four half days. And so I want to reserve what date we will pick for this second contract day and see if we get that application approved by the state. And so in July, we will be coming to the board for revision of the calendar. We'll get all that information out to the parents just as soon as we can after the state makes their decision. So we've had multiple conversations with the Teachers Association and, and they are favorable of that. And by the way, I really appreciate those meetings that we have with the Teachers Association. They're called my discussion meetings, because I, I hear a lot of what's going on in the school corporation and needs that we have, and I, I appreciate their support. And then any compensation, the compensation for these two additional days, that'll be determined through the bargaining process.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval of the, of increasing the number of teacher workdays to 185 pending the compensation.
I'll second.
Move and second. Any discussion?
I, I advocated for that for 20 years, but the, as a spokesperson for the Teachers Association, and I felt I had to say that there needed to be compensation at that time, and the state was not being very forthcoming, so it just never did happen. I'm grateful that finally it looks like we can make it happen. But yeah, I definitely see the need and for the number of, the number of teacher days that are actually worked versus the number of teacher contract days, this is, this is a step in the right direction.
And, because I, I have been asked about this, this will not be one of those things where they say, okay, well, we're going to pay you for these two extra days, but that's in lieu of any increase that you ever wise would have gotten.
Right.
That, you know, they, the teachers need to know that it's not the case.
Well, they're two different issues, really.
Yeah, yeah, so they, okay, because that, that was one concern that I, I had heard, so I just wanted to get that out there. Any further discussion?
So is that if the state denies this, your, our recommendation is still do 100? Is it?
Yeah, if the state denies the two other flex days, we're still doing the two.
We're still doing it no matter what, okay. And then we'll have plenty of time to communicate with parents.
Right.
Good.
Any further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now it's time to order some school buses for 2024, so we'll go back to Mr. Irwin.
The wild thing is we have to order school buses now if we even want a chance of getting them in 2024. So we worked through the process, last year was the first time we had to do that, where we were looking almost a year, year and a half in advance, and that's what we have to do now. So if we want to get buses, we have to order them now to even have a chance of them showing up in 2024, because I don't want them to order later on and then they somehow fall to our 2025 budget, which would just cause issues there. I don't want to have that stuff pushing forward. So we want to make this order now. This is one bus on this request. There would be another bus, which would be a mini bus that we'd bring to you in August. They couldn't even bring us pricing on that right now. So we're trying to work through that with them. So this is, this has gone through the co-op as far as pricing requirements, and what we're asking for is permission to buy the international bus. They have given us a trade-in price on three of our buses that would be surplus anyway, one of, couple of them of which don't even run. And so the amount of trade-in that they would give on is way higher than what we've been getting in surplus anyway. We've had some good luck with the internationals. Audrey has been a big fan of those. So with the trade-in, which they'll take the trade-in, this is only for the internationals, it brings that as the lowest priced bus. So that would bring that bus in at $141,677. Bus prices have continued to rise. I know what we paid for buses in 2023 of a 78 passenger was about 115. And so last year, we kind of got lucky as well, is when we put in our order, it was right before they did a, a, a price hike. So the, the buses are a lot heftier in price than what they were even a year ago, but this allows us to make the order now and have a chance of us getting it for next school year. Well, the following school year, the 24, 25 school year, we won't get it during this school year. So with that, I'm asking for your approval to buy the international bus, which was $141,677 after trade-in.
Do we have a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just which vendor was this?
This is, this is through the CISC. Co-op, when we do the pricing through Midwest Transit is one of the, the people that we work through.
And to clear the record, there are, for a lot of things like buses and, and other equipment and things, there are pre-negotiated prices that are approved by the state and that's these co-op. So we don't have to go out and rebid them every time. We can go to the state-approved list to, to be able to, to make those purchases. So any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And now a consideration to approve the high school gym floor quote.
Yeah, so back in the wintertime, we had the issue that we had the property claim on our building on 46. Around that same time, we had a roof leak at the high school that caused water to get on our main gym floor. Their spot on the gym, gym floor started to do what's called cupping, where the boards start kind of pulling up. It creates kind of a wavy feel within the, within the gym floor. Arnold and his team, we worked with the insurance adjuster, several floor specialists. We tried doing some, some drying off of the floor, putting specialty fans blowing underneath the floor system. It dried out and it laid down a little bit, but it did not get the cupping out. So the only way that we can do that is to completely sand down the floor, and they would sand it all the way down to the bare wood again. Have to redo the lines, redo the logos, redo all of that. The price that's sitting here, the $35,000, which is the low quote, is to do all of that work, and that's to actually get the floor back to that level even playing surface. That spot that was there is literally right underneath one of the, the goals. This would have been less of a deal if that, that spot would have been over by the bleachers somewhere, but it's right there in the playing surface, so we need to get that taken care of. Insurance would be covering what's going to be above and beyond $25,000, our deductible on our insurance for property is $25,000. And the reason Brad and I talked about this, the reason that it's a separate deductible from what happened in the other building is that these are not related to the same incident, so it's a separate deductible. There will be some flooring that will get replaced that had some termite damage on it and stuff like that from years and years back. So it'll be a section of flooring that will get replaced, but we were assured by the, by the different flooring companies that that floor does have a sanding down left in it. One of them even told me that that floor would outlast my career, so there you go. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of the flooring bid of $35,000 through Floor Care Concepts to redo the main gym floor in the high school.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second. Any questions, discussion?
Yeah, just quick, on the logo, the logo and the lines, all that's included within that quote?
That is.
Wow, that's, that's pretty reasonable, actually.
Yeah.
One, I thought. And you did say that it's thick enough still to take another sanding?
We were assured, we even pulled boards up, they, you know, those, those flooring professionals, you know, got to look at the boards, they got to look at the replacement boards that we use, if there's ever any patching on it. And it was essentially unanimous that they all thought that it had enough life in it to be sanded down at least one more time.
So any, anything in excess of that $25,000 deductible is going to be on, insurance is going to agree to that, correct?
Yeah.
Good.
And I've already contacted the insurance adjuster and let him know that this was up for your guys' approval tonight so that we would be in contact this week.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we're considering the approval of stage curtain replacement quotes for both the primary school and the intermediate school.
We've been talking about this one for a while. Jen Barrett's smile on her face says it all. She's ready to go. She even let me know about it after the awards program. She said, you like those curtains? And I said, no, I don't. So we're, we're finally getting these curtains replaced. The curtains that we're asking for are the ones that already have the flame resistance built into them, so that creates less maintenance issue. This is something that is already budgeted for and approved through our ESER funding. So this, this part will eat up what's remaining of ESER 2, so, and then it will carry into a little bit of ESER 3 funds. But this, this will be both schools, EPS and EIS for this curtain replacement. And so I know that they're excited to get that done and move on. That's, that's definitely something that when we look at just upkeep, one of those items, that's definitely something that needs done.
And what is the quote coming?
Oh, I'm sorry, it's $43,446.90.
And who's that with?
That is with JW.
Okay, all right.
They were the low quote.
Two or four curtains? We're going to be good, do curtains on both sides?
Both sides, both schools.
Way different than what I thought it was going to come back at.
Yes, as well. So when we had worked through, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
We were, we were pretty pleased with the pricing.
And those were about as bad a shape as the high school kitchen was.
Yes, yeah, they needed done.
They were terrible. It's time.
Yeah, it is time. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
For Jennifer, I'll make the motions, she's so excited.
I'll please the price.
Right, that's what you said originally.
Completely, yeah.
I'll second.
I do disagree with the, I don't know, put that in the memo, but put the JB logo on the curtain.
Well, there is that, but.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve Navigate 360. This is an Alice agreement. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so we've been steadily working with our staff to implement and transition our response to violent clinical incidents. Alice is a proactive response to those type of incidents. And so last year, we actually hosted a training where we got an administrator and SROs at every level, including central office with Dr. Sanders and myself, trained in this, these protocols. And so we've been working on talking with staff. It's been a lot of positive interaction with them as far as this options-based approach, that it makes a lot more sense and provides a lot more safety, I believe, to our staff and to our students. This is a two-year agreement to go through it, and what it does is it adds in a 45-minute e-learning blended course that goes along with it. And there's some different resources that go through as far as implementation with students as well. We have to get to that point as we roll through it, but there's kind of a holistic approach to that, to allow us to roll that out, to make sure that everyone's on the same page, make sure that we continue to roll through it as a staff together, allow people to ask questions and do, you know, the things that we know are right by our students and staff. So this is a two-year agreement. Again, this was reviewed by Ferguson Law. We made a couple of small changes to the agreement based on Christine's recommendations, and they made, they willingly made those changes. So with that, I'm asking for your guys' approval of a Navigate 360 Alice agreement. Navigate 360 is the owner of that company, that company, they're the parent company.
And the amount of the agreement?
The amount, the yearly amount is, I'm sorry, I forgot to pull that up, that is one, real quick.
Is it the full $7,700 or?
So year one is $7,750. Year two, they expect to be somewhere between like a 5% to 8% increase. That's typically what the yearly increase is. So we will get that renewal, but it'll be pretty close to that price again the next year. So in total, it'll be probably somewhere short of about $16,000 over the two years.
And what, where does that money come from?
It'll be paid for through the corporation funds out of operations.
Okay. I move approval.
I'll second.
Move and second. Any further discussion? Now, when new hires come on, you know, who haven't had the training after others have, how, how does that work?
So we have, so one of the things that, that the staff day added at the beginning of the year allows us that full day, that full second day where the one day of the teachers will have, but allows us to get some of those trainings in. So that'll be part of, in that day, they'll have the ability to do the, the training with staff as we go through some of the, the mental hoops of why we're doing what we're doing and working through that. They'll also get the e-learning module. When we onboard people, Susan does a good job of bringing them up today of saying, here are the different trainings we need, whether it's the stuff that we have to do for blood worn pathogens and all the other stuff. So they'll get onboarded with some of those things, and then they'll be able to work with their building admin to get up to date with the different safety procedures and protocols that we have. So that'd be handled at the building level.
And really, all of our initiatives, the principals are very good about when we bring on a brand-new teachers and make sure that they've had, they sometime get scheduled for stop-the-bleeding training, TBRI, and PLC, professional learning communities, if they're not familiar with that. So the principals keep track of that and are very good about scheduling those folks for that training.
And that training is yearly. So we would go through that on a yearly basis, because obviously you are going to have staff come in and out. And it's not going to be a one-time conversation. It'll be something that we continue to talk about through the school year with staff.
We have a motion that was seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Consideration to approve the year-round status quo classified contracts. Mr. Irwin.
Yep, so this is just a yearly renewal status quo, so that means all these contracts are the same amount, but all of our classified contracts are one-year contracts, so it just carries them for into, forward into this next fiscal year. So July 1st of 2023, all the way to June 30th of 2024. So with that, Christine re-reviewed those, just to double-check, make sure there wasn't any updated law changes or things that we needed to look over. But with that, it's essentially a change of dates is what you're seeing with that, their status quo. So I'm asking for your approval, please.
Move approval of the classified contracts. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now we have the 2023, 2024 Classified Handbook, yet another handbook. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, another yearly. Throughout the course of the year, we continue to take kind of notes on things that we think, hey, this might be something we need to clear up, here's something else that we might need to consider. It's hard to cover every little thing in this document, but we do our best to continue to update it each year to make sure that we're up, up with everything that's going on. So all the changes that you see, they were marked in red, Christine did review those. Of note, most of them were just clarifications of certain things of who receives paid holidays, who gets paid leave days, when those commence. So what we're recommending is a total of twenty-one thousand, six hundred dollars for twenty spaces. So I'm asking for your approval, please.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, we're on the last page. Okay. Consideration to approve the year-round status quo classified contracts. Mr. Irwin.
Yep, so this is just a yearly renewal status quo. So that means all these contracts are the same amount, but all of our classified contracts are one-year contracts. So it just carries them forward into this next fiscal year. So July 1st of 2023, all the way to June 30th of 2024. So with that, Christine re-reviewed those, just to double-check, make sure there wasn't any updated law changes or things that we needed to look over. But with that, it's essentially a change of dates is what you're seeing with that, their status quo. So I'm asking for your approval, please.
Move approval of the classified contracts?
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have the 2023-2024 Classified Handbook, yet another handbook. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, another yearly. Throughout the course of the year, we continue to take kind of notes on things that we think, hey, this might be something we need to clear up. Here's something else that we might need to consider. It's hard to cover every little thing in this document, but we do our best to continue to update it each year to make sure that we're up with everything that's going on. So all the changes that you see, they were marked in red. Christine did review those. Of note, most of them were just clarifications of certain things of who receives paid holidays, who gets paid leave days, when those commence, things like that. The one change that was in there that is a little bit different than what is there has to do with vacation leave. We don't have a lot of classified employees that do qualify for vacation just because most of our classified employees are just school-year employees. But for our ones that do, the way that the language was written, some employees, if they were hired at a certain time, it would cause them to almost have to go two years prior to earning that vacation time, which is inconsistent with what other employees were getting based on their hire date, which seemed kind of unfair to those employees. So what this does is allow an employee to earn that vacation time, and after a year's of work, obviously, they get paid leave and they have bereavement leave, and they have other types of leaves available to them. But it makes that consistency that after a year's work time, they've earned the ability for us to add that benefit to them, which would allow them to get, depending on when their year time is and when we actually load vacation time, which is June 1st of every year for the upcoming year, they would get a proration of that based on when they hit their year's time, so that they would have that available to them. And then the way that that's administered is still consistent with the way that the other language reads as well. Christine and I kind of talked through that language a little bit. We kind of went back and forth and tweaked that to try to make it as clear as possible. And then that was something that I also reviewed with Dr. Sanders in our business office as well, so that they felt comfortable. So with that, I'm asking for your approval of these things. For the Classified Handbook for the 23-24 school year.
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I think that's a great change.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration to approve quotes for the Edgewood Primary School Courtyard Project. Mr. Irwin.
Yeah, so this one is, just as far as getting it moving forward, has been a little bit more of a challenge than what we anticipated in the beginning. You had all had approved a contract with Spring Point Architect to help us go and navigate this process. Through that process, we created specific bid specifications and all the drawings and things to go along with it so that contractors knew exactly what it is that we wanted and what the materials were and all of those things. We invited no less than six different contractors to bid on it. We had a specific date and gave them a timeframe to submit those bids. We received zero qualifying bids on that day, which made us have to go back to the drawing board. I think some of the challenges that we're running into is just some site access issues that has kind of pushed away some people from wanting to get involved with it just because having to come through that side door to get into the courtyard is going to make things a little bit more challenging. And it also, quite frankly, has made some of the costs go up because of how labor-intensive it will be to do some of this work. The beauty of it is this is something that is being paid for through a grant that Matt Wooden had written, and so the grant is still going to be able to cover these things. What we did was we went back to some of the different vendors and talked about them trying to get different pieces of this so that we could piece it together and still get done what we wanted to get done. So we went back and talked to some of those different contractors. And so within that, what I'm asking you to do is to approve those quotes for that package for the EPS courtyard that are through some of those different vendors that we asked to talk to originally that didn't want to have to bite it all off themselves. And so collectively together, they're going to come together and finish off this project. It won't be something that I think is completely complete by the time school starts in August just because some of the timing of when you do certain plantings isn't ideal in July and early August. It would be a lot of upkeep to keep those alive, and the landscaper was not really quite comfortable with doing some of those things. So we had some discussion about the timing of that to make that work. So with that, I'm asking to approve some separate quotings. One is through Wells Landscaping, Rogers Remodeling, Community Play Things, and Nature Explore to do the individual pieces that make up this bid package that we had put together originally, that we did put out. We received no bids, and so we had to go back to the drawing board on this. So with that, I'm asking for your approval. And again, this is covered through the Build, Learn, Grow Grant.
And the total amount?
Total amount? Pull that up. Wells Landscaping quote was for a total of... Didn't total it on there. It was just over thirty, just under thirty thousand. And then the Community Play Things quote was for thirteen thousand, four hundred, fifty-five dollars. The Nature Explore quote was for thirteen thousand, seven hundred, eighty-three dollars and ninety cents. And the Rogers Remodeling was for fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval of the courtyard project.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It's one person who can kind of be the head coach here and coordinate all this?
That's the architect, that's Springport, that's who we contracted with.
That's the spring, they're overseeing, okay.
Yeah. And then also Heather and Arnold and all of us are involved as well.
This is all still within that budget from that grant?
Yeah.
All right.
It's my understanding that what's being installed is flexible based on the age of the students who might be involved because of the way things are moving around, so.
Yes. It will have use, even if it wasn't the preschool, using it EPS will definitely have use for it as well. Yeah.
Yes. Awesome. Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Consideration to award alternate bid to Nighty Construction for the Edgewood Junior High School Concrete Project. Dr. Sanders.
Okay, if you remember, we had the project up at the junior high where we constructed the new auxiliary gym. We constructed the design labs. And part of that project was the expansion of the cafeteria to give the students more seating. And then we added some outdoor seating for the students. And the contractor for the project did a really good job for most of the project. They were really well, good to work with. But we were not happy with the concrete that was poured for the outdoor seating. We, in anticipation of making a change, when we advertised for the bid for renovating the old administration office, we did an alternative bid to replace that concrete. We were still working with the contractor who did the project up there, but they decided they did not want to come back and redo the concrete. So we will withhold that part of their payment. And we would like the board to award the bid, the alternative bid to Nighty Construction. The alternative bid was for twenty thousand dollars. Matt, do you have anything to add to that?
No, I think one of the things that we talked about was just making sure that they were aware of what the school schedule was, and so we hope to have that done before the start of school.
I move approval of the bid for the junior high concrete work.
I'd second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just, I saw work being done, and I wasn't quite sure what I was seeing because I saw the, I heard.
It had not started yet, no. The stuff that's going on in the back of the junior high is from the junior high kitchen renovations that were approved a few months back.
Okay, because I heard, sounded like big pieces of concrete going into the dumpsters, so I assumed we had gotten it.
Yeah, there's pieces from the junior high kitchen right there that were definitely getting ripped out, yeah.
Okay.
They're in process to be able to hit that goal and be ready for the start of the school year as well.
Okay, good.
It's a busy times around here, there's a lot going on.
Nighty's the one doing the next door.
Nighty is the contractor that is doing the remodel of the old admin office.
How's that going?
It is coming along nicely, they are moving along. And so right now, they, everything seems to be on track. There's going to be kind of tight right there at the start of the school year.
They're going to ask you to do both, both of this, okay, just want to make sure.
Knock on wood, they've been very good to work.
So far, things have been fairly smooth. We'll try not to jinx ourselves here.
All right.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, we have consideration to renew the contract with the Orientation and Mobility Services. And Jennifer Anderson is here for us tonight to discuss that.
Good evening. I'm just requesting renewal of the contract with Bridging the Gap. It is a service provider for orienteering and mobility services for a student that we have with these services written in their IEP. It's specialized to blind-low vision. And we've used her all of last year and would like to continue that.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Just, what's the anticipated cost?
I'm sorry, I can't.
The anticipated cost?
It is fifty dollars per hour. She is currently scheduled in the IEP for one hour per week.
Oh, okay.
So last year, she started late last year, so it's very cost-friendly.
Oh, yeah.
Given. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
With, I'm not going into too much detail.
Right.
For the student, it's a necessary service for this child.
Yeah.
If our needs change, we get more, then she has more time and?
Yeah, and as she becomes, as a student becomes familiar with the environment, those services, as the student ages, will continue to be reduced.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And now, consideration to renew the contract with Go Solutions for their Medicaid billing services.
So I'm asking to renew our contract with Go Solutions, Go Claims. This is our fourth year with them, and they provide all of the third-party billing for our Medicaid claims to go to the state to be processed and then for the payments to come back to us for Medicaid services.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration to approve a resolution authorizing dissolving of the Forest Hills Special Education Cooperative and the establishment of an independent special education program for RBB students. So, Dr. Sanders.
Yes, so Spencer Owen Community Schools and RBB for several years have worked together through this Forest Hills Governing Board to oversee special education needs. We were making, we were meeting those needs where we shared staff, we shared students. Some of our students would go to Spencer Owen schools, and some of theirs would come to our schools. And it really met a need for several years for both school corporations. But needs change, populations change, and just because something worked for a period of time doesn't mean you always do it. So we took some time within our office to decide whether this is something that would benefit RBB. There just wasn't a financial or logistical reason to continue. We started having conversations with the leadership at Spencer Owen. That led to working with our special education attorney to establish a timeline where we would meet all the requirements for dissolving the governing board. And so we've done that. Jennifer Anderson has led us through that whole process. And so I'm recommending tonight that we dissolve the Forest Hills Governing Board. Both school corporations have their own special education director now, Jennifer being ours. And I think Spencer Owen's happy with the person that they hired. And then any future needs that come up, which might require us to work with another school corporation, not necessarily Spencer Owen, but we could work with any school corporation, we would do an MOU with them for that specific need. And Jennifer, do you have anything you would like to add to what I just said?
It's just, it's been a really good working relationship between Spencer and RBB for years. And just as Dr. Sanders stated, it, times are changing and populations change, and the need is just no longer there to have those shared resources. We can support the majority of our students by ourselves and keep our students within our own school community and be able to service them and provide their FAP here in RBB.
We have motion to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Quick question on that. So the next thing on the journey is our first MOU, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's, and that, when that happens, are we reimbursing them like the old Forest Hills days? Or are they reimbursing us, or how's that going to work?
So for the PT, it's split fifty-fifty. We will still continue to hold her contract, and they will reimburse us. We'll bill them quarterly.
It's still like Forest Hills, but that's to the MOUs, just for that one specific person?
Just that one position, correct. That's the only shared position that we need.
Okay, but in the future, we could do that shared position with MCC?
Correct.
Whomever, that's?
And it leaves a lot of time of our staff here where the treasurer, Debbie, spent a lot of time making sure that we were doing everything right financially. And so that'll take away, she won't have to work with that down the road here.
So we won't have any, and I'll quit asking a question in a minute. EH, we won't have any EH kids from Owen County?
Nope.
They'll have their own setup there?
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Yep.
All right, thanks.
I think this has been a good move. Again, when it started, it was perfect situation. But as time went on, it ended up that we were in charge of some people that never set foot over here. And then so when, you know, in compensation, when you're talking about employment issues and things like that, that makes things extremely difficult, and that was going back and forth. So it just kind of got muddy. And so this is a way to really clean it up, and then we do a memorandum of understanding for just what we need when we need it. And not have a global relationship, so.
And Spencer Owen will be working on the same type of resolution.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just, I appreciate, I know you've been working on it for at least three years, and I appreciate. I know it's been a lot of hard work, I appreciate your efforts.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, looking into the memorandum of understanding with Spencer Owen with, for a shared physical therapist.
Yep, so I'm requesting your approval for the MOU for our current physical therapist, Carrie Coconhour, to continue in that position. It will be a fifty-fifty split, so that's currently what she's doing. She has for several years, it has almost been exactly fifty-fifty for even the person before her, so the last five years that I've been here. And we are extremely pleased with her and would like to continue that arrangement.
I'd move approval.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, another memorandum of understanding with Spencer Owen Schools for a shared on-call transition consultant.
So I'm asking for your approval for the MOU for Jenny Johnson to continue to support Spencer in this next upcoming year with the transition of the administrative work through special education. So she has everything ready to go, she has all of their documents. So she will just consult with them and help them work through their special education reports, through the December 1 report, through entering teachers and students and working through those administrative items with the person that they are going to hire for the next year. And that's the last phase of the transition.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
It just sounds like a good transition move and help out both.
Help out, make it work.
We want to make sure they're supported through that. It's a unique skill set, so we want to make sure that they're fully supported.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Now, consideration for the core project curriculum.
So I'm asking for consideration of the approval of the core project curriculum. This is to replace the current curriculum Y-TRY. After the last couple of years, we just realized Y-TRY was just not quite the appropriate social or life-skill learning curriculum for the secondary level, especially at the high school. The junior high still continues to use Y-TRY and finds it appropriate, but we knew that the high school needed something a little different. So Lane Howard and Zoe Reisman, the social worker and one of the school counselors, invested a lot of time in researching multiple different curriculums and found this one. and found this one to be the most appropriate for high school students. It's focused on Castle's five tenants of social awareness, responsible decision-making, relationship skill building and self-management. So the types of skills are geared toward post-secondary skills that students will need to be able to go out in the workforce. So it aligns with our ready schools, with our graduate profile. And we just asked for your consideration to replace Y-TRY. Let that stay at the junior high and, and use this at the, at the high school level.
I'll second.
Moving seconded. Any discussion? I think that's awesome that it's working in with our graduate profile that these issues that high school students have do carry over into the workplace as they... So this step is not only good for our students, but it's good for the area employers and those who employ them as well because it helps them learn how to cope and deal with these kind of things. So that's awesome. Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we have consideration to approve an agreement with the Lancers and Associates, Mr. Owen.
Yeah, so this agreement is for Lancer and Associates to serve as the architect for all of our projects that are, that's in the proposed 2023 lease rental bond. Their fee includes the other professional services like mechanical, electrical and structural engineers. Dr. Sanders, Dana, Brad and myself all sat on a call with Terry Lancer and walked through the contract. It was also reviewed by Ferguson Law. We did make some tweaks to certain things based on Ferguson Law's recommendations that were consistent with some of the other contracts like we did with Skillman as it related to insurance coverage. We also worked through the pay section with them as far as Section 11 outlines what the fee is. And so we went from just a named percentage, which seemed like it could get messy based on as the projects evolved, to a named amount so that there was a known amount from the get-go as far as the costs associated with their work. Their fee for all projects included in the 2023 bond would be $1.6 million. The only thing that that does not include are some reimbursables, which are kind of similar to what we talked about to a degree with Skillman, but at a lesser cost. They, they expected that to be typically less than $20,000. This is normal based on the other contracts that we've approved with architects in the past. And the total percentage of the fee is actually less than what we've approved in the past with previous architecture firms. So with that, I am asking for your approval of the contract with Lancer and Associates. One other piece of that that we did work out was to wait on some of the payment invoicing until we've secured the financing that's come along with the bond. The only thing that would change that for Lancer and Associates is for some reason the closing of the bond got pushed back. And then we would come back and talk with you as the board about working through to get them paid sooner for their work. So again, we feel very comfortable with the partners that we brought on. We're really excited about the people that we've brought on. It wasn't too long after this meeting, Dr. Sanders and I jumped on a call with Lancer and Associates, Skillman Corporation, Arnold, Rick, and we were already talking through certain things that having Skillman in, in the conversation and working through things that just hasn't been something that we've done in the past that I feel like is already getting us off to a strong start with communication and making sure that we're catching all the little nuances that come up in all these different projects. So we're excited about trekking forward and, and asking for your approval with Lancer and Associates.
I move approval. I'll second.
Moving seconded. Okay, any discussion?
This is, so this 1.6 plus whatever is within the scope of the bonds that we are-
Yeah, so that would be included in some of the soft cost estimates that were put together when Skillman looked at the cost of the projects. They had given you some hard construction costs. They'd given you soft costs that make up that $40 million. And that's part of, this is part of those dollars that are in the different professional services that are required in order for us to do these projects.
So now with your approval tonight and, and the previous approval with Skillman, we could really start to move forward and have that Skillman, Lancer and RBB team to work together on these projects. I think it's going to go very well.
As far as if, if there's a delay in getting the bonds issued, we have, we have enough savings to take care of the initial cost.
We have flexibility in our funds that we could do that. And then there's ways that we can come back with working with, you know, whether it's with Christine or Jacob to talk about the ability for the school corporation to reimburse ourselves for costs associated with the projects through the bond and then to come back and do that. I don't expect that to happen.
I know, I'm just kind of checking.
And Lancer stated they'd be willing to work with us if that was to happen.
And we have a healthy balance plus we have a-
Right, I just wanted to-
And our rainy day fund is, is very strong, so.
Because if the, if after the possible, the bonds didn't get issued and everything's next.
We would only owe them for the work that they did.
Thus far, okay.
So that's stated in the contract as at any point, there's no early penalties or anything like that. The only thing that we pay for is the work that they complete for the school corporation.
I've enjoyed the conversations with them and along with Skillman. I think this is going to be a great team for the, for the corporation. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. That completes the action items for this evening. So now we'll turn it to, over to Dr. Sanders for his superintendent's report.
Yes, yes. With any luck, after my report, we'll be out of here by 8:30.
And thank you for your report.
No, just very quickly, I wanted to share some retreats. A lot of times we talks about training that our teachers receive and, and it's hard sometimes for administrators to get training during the school year. And so I know I always wanted to go to a conference back in February, but I just couldn't get away in the middle of the school year. So there's three retreats, training conferences basically, that I will be attending this summer. Actually, Matt and Jennifer Anderson and I are leaving tomorrow to head to Arkansas for a Marzano High Reliability Schools Conference. Several of our administrators actually did go to this back in February, I think it was. And I remember my phone blowing up while they were there with their excitement about what they were learning. So I'm really looking forward to, to being able to go to this conference. And then I'm looking forward to the superintendent's retreat. I belong to a study council of superintendents and they're going to have a retreat in New Buffalo, Michigan. It'll be a time for me to sit and, and ask questions and learn from colleagues. We're going to have a couple of these superintendents who are going to talk about leadership and best practices. And Lisa will be, my wife will be going with me to this one. And so looking forward to that June 28th through the 30th. And then we've scheduled, last year was the first year we tried an administrative leadership retreat for our own administrators in, down in Nashville, Indiana. And this year, we're going to go up to Indianapolis. And we have a conference center we're going to use there. And it was so, so, I can't really express how really beneficial it was last year. We, we looked at our current initiatives across the corporation. We renewed our commitment to those. We developed some goals and we reviewed those goals just about every meeting this year and just kind of see where, where we were going and how we were progressing. And it just brought our team so much closer together. That'll be July 27th to 28th. So the conference in Arkansas, the conference in Indianapolis, that'll be paid through Title II. And the superintendent's retreat, that'll be paid through the, our, we belong to the West Central Education Service Center. And then they will have some sponsoring businesses that will pay for those costs. The other two things real quick, I was so impressed, I just had to mention it tonight, the camp invention that was held at EPS. They had 167 campers. They had 13 leadership interns, which were basically high school students, some parent volunteers. They had eight instructors and two assistants. And they were led by Alyssa Drews who directed it. It was so cool. They did a nice presentation. They, the students were involved in learning engineering, a design process. And they were able to on the last day show off their inventions. So maybe next year, we'll try to get you guys up there if you have time. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to Alyssa Drews and all the teachers who made that a big success. And then I, I'm sure you would agree with me that the commencement was a very, a very beautiful service. I thought our speaker, Aaron Wells, did a really great job talking about his dad. It was very inspirational. So that's my report for tonight.
I just happen to know there's a rainbow behind you. Okay, thank you, Dr. Sanders. RBB EA comments, we have Mr. Yules with us this evening.
As Matt said, there's always plenty going on around here. Thank you all for keeping on top of all those things. Give a quick shout out to Mr. John Kerr, I think, who was on the board docket, going to be boys tennis coach. Time flies by. One of my old players. Holy smokes. As Dr. Sanders mentioned, I appreciate the, all the discussions about the calendar as we're going to 185 days. I know from experience, just having the one day, it's a zoo. And I'm a high school teacher. It's nothing like elementary. So there are just things we have to be here to do. Elementary teachers, you know, actually all levels, they're, they're in before we're supposed to be in, getting things ready. But sometimes you just have to be together to do certain things. And so it'd be nice to have an uninterrupted day. Because I know admin, you know, they're scrambling as well and they have, there's just things they need us there to do. And so that day gets packed and it's crazy. So it would be nice to have a second day to just close the doors or have our own meetings, get necessary things done without a doubt. I can imagine with elementary, they'll make their own schedule, of course, about when parents come and drop things off. It'd be nice to have that done, maybe that first day, and then they can brainstorm, do all the things that they do down at that level. So at any rate, as he mentioned, you know, other things like compensation, that's taken care of in bargaining. But we had the conversations and we appreciate that. And we're looking forward to starting the year, a little bit more breathing room there. I don't recall the details of the second day yet. I think it was kind of a little bit up in the air about when the second day was. But I know we've talked about it in the past, but-
Yeah, let me, if I could just add something on that second day. Either way, we're going to have a day for the parent-teacher conferences. It's just whether or not that day for parent-teacher conferences will be a flex day or contract day.
Yeah, and I think that was our understanding in previous conversations anyway. So we'll get everybody on board and get ready to go. With that, we'll see you in July.
Thank you, Mr. Yules. Now we have a board member comments, Mr. DeMoss.
I don't have much. I did very much enjoy the graduation and Mr. Will's wonderful speech. It was very touching. But congratulations to Class 23 and now we'll get to work on the Class 24.
Mr. Earl.
Thank you. I have not much to say, Jennifer. Thank you for your presentation tonight. Appreciate it. I'm just so proud of this school system that, so, so good to be out. It's funny, you know, you sit here thinking about a 64, 65 kitchen and I was in that kitchen as a student, so. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Jacobs.
I'm looking forward to all the, the busy projects as we, you know, continue to help our corporation to grow and make it very open and add more space for students that we have on waiting lists. We want, we want to provide for every student that we can. So I'm very excited about all of that. Again, thank you for the donations. We always need them. We appreciate them very much. And graduation was great. It was beautiful. Mr. Will's had me tearing up on stage. I was trying to keep it together. He's, he's just an amazing educator for us. So that's it. Have a great rest of the summer.
Mr. Beck.
Thanks, thanks for the ministers that came this evening. Thanks for your report, Ms. Anderson. And again, yeah, everybody enjoy learning this summer at your different conferences and look forward to seeing you in July.
Thank you. One of the things that you kept hearing tonight was that this has been reviewed by Christine. This has been reviewed by Christine at Ferguson Law. So I just, Christine Bartlett, I wanted to say thank you so much. You have been such a great help to, to the board to make sure you keep us on track, keep me on track during the meetings and stuff. And so I really appreciate you and all you guys do for us. So thank you. And I appreciate Kat staying tonight. We've had a couple really long meetings lately. Just thank you so much for, for being here and letting people have access to, to our meetings. So I'm excited about the projects. I'm just, you know, amazed at how well things are go, I believe things are going at RBB. And we've got a really bright future. Our students have really bright futures. And with that, we'll adjourn. Have a wonderful evening.